Good evening, everybody. The time is 5:45 PM. And I would like to welcome you to the special closed session meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville for today, Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public are welcome to join us here at the Emeryville Civic Center. You can also join us using the link provided for on the agenda. I would like to begin the meeting by asking the clerk to take the role.
Councilmember Carr.
Present.
Councilmember Mora.
Present.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Here.
And Mayor Bowers.
Here.
Next is Ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report on ex parte communication?
No.
I seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment. A member of the public wishing to comment for an item not on the agenda for the closed session has two minutes. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public with hands raised?
No, Mayor, there are not.
The public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, the time is 5:46. I'm adjourning us to closed session for items five, six, and we'll report out at seven. Thank you.
Welcome back. The time is 6:29 PM and we are returning from the closed session portion of this meeting. Item seven is reporting out of closed session, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had no reportable action this evening except for items 6.1.1 and 6.1.2. On item 6.1.1, on a motion from Councilmember Carr and a second from Councilmember Welch, the council voted unanimously to reject the claim. And item 6.1.2, on a motion by Councilmember Carr and a second by Councilmember Welch, the council voted unanimously to reject the claim.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the reporting out of closed session. The time is 6:29. Madam Clerk, this meeting stands adjourned. We are in recess until 6:45 for those who are viewing at home to conduct the city's study session.
...
Good evening. The time is 6:45 PM. I would like to call to order this special study session for the City of Emeryville City Council today, Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the city council and the public are invited to join us here at Emeryville City Hall. You can also follow this meeting via Zoom using the link provided for in today's agenda. I'd like to begin this meeting by asking if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryfarce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. Item three, approval of the final agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryfarce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Agenda has been approved. Item four, ex parte communications. Any members wishing to provide ex parte communications on this meeting? Seeing and hearing none. Item five is public comment for items not on the agenda. A member of the public wishing to comment on an item not on this agenda has two minutes to do so. April, do we have any hands raised for this?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, did we receive any written comments for this meeting?
No.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Item six is the study session. We have one study session item tonight. Multifamily bulky pickup services update. This was referred to the city council for study by Vice Mayor Welch. And I will turn it over to Staff Matt Anderson. Good evening.
Give me just one second here. April, is that screen share mode?
Bam.
All right, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Matt Anderson, Environmental Programs Analyst for the Public Works Department. Here today to talk about trash, specifically bulky waste pickup in multifamily properties. So why are we here? Why are we talking about this? Why is this important? This was an item that was referred to the council by Vice Mayor Welch. It's an item with a potential to affect a significant portion of Emeryville residents. Seventy-two percent of the units of housing in Emeryville are rent or occupied. And this would affect potentially how they could take care of their excess trash. When reviewing the waste contract, we found a discrepancy in the amount of cubic yardage that's allocated to those folks in single-family homes versus those folks that live in multifamily buildings. And additionally, illegal dumping is a significant issue, both in Emeryville, the Bay Area, across California. But locally, we get over 100 C Click Fix tickets just for illegal dumping every year. And that takes a significant time out of Public Works crew that they could be otherwise spending on maintenance and items across the city. And that takes resources as well. So just a quick background about our waste contract and where we are. We are exclusively franchised to Waste Management of Alameda County, or WM. They take care of almost all of the waste services in our city. That includes the regular curbside pickup, bulky pickup, construction demolition, the city cans that you see outside, things like that. We signed our original contract in 2010 and we signed an extension in 2020, so that's good through 2030. They do have the exclusive rights to bulky in our city, so any potential conversation would probably start with them in terms of future programs. And one thing I did want to highlight, you know, about our program here is that we have some of the lowest rates in the entire Bay Area. We're often pointed to, especially being adjacent to Oakland, who has some of the highest rates, as a good model. We have the second lowest residential rates in all of Alameda County and we have the fourth lowest commercial rates in all of Alameda County. So definitely, we have a favorable contract for both our residents and our businesses. So a little bit in specific about our bulky contract. Before I get into this, just a quick definition. SFD is single-family dwelling or single-family home. That's a single-family home, duplex, triplex, one through three units. And then multifamily dwelling, MFD, is four units and above. So in our contract, single-family homes get two free pickups every year. One of those is the April Spring bulky cleanup, second week of April, and the other one is on-call, that they can schedule at the time of their choosing. Multifamily buildings also get two free pickups for buildings four through 500 units. And then buildings that have more than 500 units get four. And those are on-call at the time of their choosing. And you can see the sizes there. CY is cubic yardage for that. And then additional pickups are available for a fee. It's $278 plus $71 per cubic yard for a single-family. And multifamily are charged on the commercial rate, so it would depend on the size they want. But it could vary from a couple hundred to over $1,000 depending on the size. And it's about $1,000 for a 30 cubic yard, which is the standard if you're doing multiple tenants. And then one thing I wanted to highlight here is that the account holder is the one that's always required to call. And in single-family buildings, the occupant is frequently the account holder. Whereas in multifamily buildings, that is frequently not the case. So there are quite a few issues, you know, related to multifamily bulky pickup that have been identified. Both here and around the Bay Area, this is a topic that's becoming more of a discussion in other cities as well. But a few things that I wanted to highlight. Barriers to access for folks that are living in multifamily buildings, they don't have the ability to schedule a pickup. And they have to work through a whole nother layer of bureaucracy, their landlord or the building owner, who may or may not be receptive to scheduling that. The cubic yardage per unit thing I mentioned earlier, it's not equal in the single-family versus multifamily per unit. Also publicity, just getting multifamily developments, multifamily buildings and tenants to know what the service is available. Frequently, via Waste Management, all the outreach goes out to the account holders. And so that would be a topic for discussion if the program were to change how that outreach would happen. But that is currently an issue. And then last but not least is availability. You know, if you're in a 50-unit complex and you only get two per year, if you're trying to move out in July, well, there's a very good chance you're out of luck and there's just nothing else that can be done, or you can pay a lot of money. So I did put together a quick, hopefully compact comparison of the different cities in Alameda County. And one thing I just, a couple of things I wanted to highlight here, but really the variation is one thing. I tried to distill it down into a cost, but there, there's an asterisk after every one of these costs. There's additional services with almost every one of them. Things vary from, in Berkeley, you have to buy a bag to bring it back to your apartment to then fill it, to then put it on the curb. Or you can get a free pickup, but only up to 300 in Albany. Or some places you get free drop-off tags to go to Davis Street. Or some places you have a certain number of pickups for mattresses, but not for bulky items. So it's just really a hodgepodge and there isn't a good universal way to compare it. But I did want to try and get a rough price estimate so you'll know what it looks like across the area. Two areas I wanted to highlight here, we'll talk about a little further, but the City of Alameda and the City of Oakland have both recently updated their contracts or portions of their contracts. And they have added the ability for tenants to call in directly and schedule a bulky pickup. So I will talk about those briefly. In November 2021, Oakland updated an addendum to their contract and they had several provisions. The highlight of it was they moved a whole route that was dedicated to picking up illegally dumped items over to doing bulky pickup. dedicated to picking up illegally dumped items over to doing bulky pickup for multifamily. And some of the provisions that they also included in that were tenants are now allowed to schedule directly. They increased the size that is allowed per tenant, per unit, and they also added a number of free drop-offs at Davis Street. And then they had an outreach campaign that included online, wraparounds on the truck, and various other items. I know cost is always a question. Unfortunately, in these reviews, the costs are never delineated, and the only dollar amount that was laid out in this contract was what Waste Management would charge for an additional bulky route if they had to start. There's so much capacity they needed to start a new service, and in that contract, they said it was $1 million per additional route. I don't think that extrapolates to Emeryville necessarily. Just as a scale comparison, they can handle about 50 pickups a day for bulky route, and we have 100, just a little over 100 pickups per year. So we're not going to, you know, necessitate a new route by any means, but I just wanted the costs to be out there, so you were aware. And then since the initiation of this program in 2021, we have had, or they have seen a 12% increase in the number of bulky pickups that were scheduled, and then overall, an 8% utilization in the multifamily units that were calling in. Second one to highlight is Alameda, the City of Alameda. They also, they redid their entire contract, so this was from scratch, and one thing they included was tenants being able to schedule their own bulky pickup. And I should note that they are not a Waste Management city. They are contracted with ACI, Alameda County Industries. Another item they included was Davis Street drop-offs. They also increased their size. And then another rider on that was they required their hauler to provide tags to the residents if the residents had any items that they wanted to donate that were reusable, rather than just trash or recyclable, and so they could set out those donation items on curbside with the bulky pickup as well, to push toward reuse economy. So in conclusion, really just here to kind of get direction from you all, and have a discussion about this. A few things to maybe bear in mind during that discussion. I want to potentially talk about, you know, where the cost of service of a program would be, whether this is something that would want to be cost-neutral, or be paid for by folks who call in, or potential raise in rates. Also, what other additional rates or services might be included. I highlighted a couple of them, but you know, if there are any other ones that are of interest, that might be worth a discussion. And then really just looking for feedback, and then permission from you all to explore, you know, solutions that we talk about, and different opportunities that would offer bulky waste pickup directly to the occupants of multifamily buildings. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Matt. We'll go to public comment first. Are there any members of the public wishing to provide comment on study session item 6.1? Do we have any hands raised?
No, Mayor. Yes, I'm sorry. Would you?
Okay.
Brian Donahue?
Can we recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes, please?
Yeah, about four, a little more than four months ago, I was videotaping the mayor at a ribbon-cutting, and I asked him, why has it been since 2019, since the city did its last biannual traffic, bicycle safety on bike boulevards? We're supposed to do it biannually. We haven't done it since 2019. I asked the mayor, Mayor Bowders, why haven't? Why are we so late? And he said he didn't know, but he would find out and get back to me. I'm letting everybody know here that the mayor never got back to me. So I took it upon myself to try to find out, since the mayor doesn't seem to be interested in bike safety on the bike boulevards. So I took it upon myself to find out why the city has been recalcitrant, why no traffic count, as we're supposed to be doing. And then I contacted the city manager, and he did not respond back. He refused to comment. He just didn't, wouldn't tell me why. And then I contracted a staff member. And the staff member, after more than a month of me trying to get an answer, the answer came back, but is, I don't know. So the mayor doesn't know, doesn't appear to be interested, the city manager's not interested, not telling us. But you know, the thing is, is our public policy, so we have a right to know. And bicyclists are being put in harm's way, and we know that because the last traffic count that city did do in 2019 showed there's too many cars on the bike boulevards, so it's unsafe. And we know that because the city determined that, and that's written into the bike pad plan. Too many cars on a bike boulevard is unsafe.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, I'm going to do a story about this.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Okay, great. So public comment is now closed, and we'll turn for discussion comments. I'd like to invite the Vice Mayor to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, thank you so much for your work on this item. This has been something that I know has been very important to my neighbors and I, and throughout just the Christie Core neighborhood, where a lot of the apartments are centralized in Emeryville. We typically experience not just the dumping in the public, but unfortunately, when people tend to move out of the buildings, they'll leave bulkier waste, old furniture and things, not just in the trash rooms, but people have told me also in the garages. And so it's really a quality of life issue that's impacting us that live in multifamily housing, and I just really appreciate your hard work and your research thus far. I had a couple of questions. The free pickup day, those are already scheduled. Do you know by any chance, or have you heard or seen in your research, if those days could be extended?
That is something we could explore. If they're not written into our contract right now, our contract only has the ability to have one. But that is definitely in terms of, you know, additional services that I mentioned could be something that would be, you know, we could get further information on and come back to you with.
Thank you. And then my second question is, any possible changes in the contract? Is there a set timeline for renegotiation with the contract? I know that it is set until 2030, but is there any type of timeline where you would be set to revisit the contract, maybe at the five-year mark, or is it just if and when we wanted to revisit and have a renegotiation, it's just up to us and we would just reach out at that time?
Unfortunately, there's no set timeline between now and 2030 that there's a renegotiation. A couple of triggers, like if there's a state law change or things like that, but nothing that's on a timeline. So it would be up to us and our time schedule.
Okay. But that is something we would be able to do. We could, before 2030, meet with them to renegotiate.
If we wanted to, and I'm going to asterisk this, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to defer to our city attorney, but my understanding is, we could at least open negotiations and begin discussions if we wanted to before then. That is an ability we have.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Others who have questions or comments?
Thank you so much.
Member Carr?
I wanted to thank, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Actually, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we are also very interested in this bulk. So that would be great to come back with the information that's requested. Thanks.
Councilmember Mora, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make a few points. One was that the, I think renters were highlighted as a really strongly affected group, but I think this affects all multifamily housing dwellers as well. So you know, the scope is, the problem is bad. I'm just echoing that, and it includes everybody in multifamily housing. The logistics of working within that two bulky pickups a year is extremely challenging. I've never seen it successfully pulled off with like more than a handful of units. So I just, my comment comes down to, I think where we really need to get is where Oakland and Alameda ended up, where they get one bulky pickup per unit, not per complex. So you're not grouping together potentially hundreds of people into one coordinated pickup. But, and I think we, as far as direction, I do like the idea of being cost-neutral. So you know, opportunities for savings include maybe spacing out those bulky pickups. So you know, at most, one week apart or two weeks apart, I don't know how that would look. And despite the contract being not up for a number of years, I feel like Waste Management, they are a customer service-oriented organization, and we're highlighting an area in which they are failing their customers, and they might be interested to work with us. And maybe there could be some sort of addendum-type agreement reached, when they understand the scope of the problem the way we do.
Thank you. Any?
That's my comment.
Councilmember Pryfaris?
So I have a question. So I agree with Councilmember Mora. Fortunately, we do have some landlords in Emeryville, and it would be great if we had something similar to Oakland and Alameda, where a unit, especially someone who's moving out, can call on Waste Management to get rid of the bulk, rather than waiting for that particular property manager to do something only when they know that there's going to be a tour of the property for new customers.
Vice Mayor Welch? Do you have it? You had your hand raised?
I did. Just in the staff report, you mentioned additional services, potentially contracting with a third party to recover reusable materials. Was there any specific party in mind you had for that at this time?
No specific parties in mind at this time.
Okay.
Councilmember Pryfaris?
My apologies. I didn't phrase it in the form of a question. How do we get there in terms of how do we get to do what Oakland-Alameda does?
Apologies. I didn't understand the question at first. So that's what I'm seeking direction on now. I think the next step is, you know, with your permission, understanding that there's a general consensus, staff will go back and kind of gather more information, maybe start conversations to see what services are available, what that might look like. And then we would come back with a more fully flushed-out idea and list of, you know, what's available, what it might look like for the council, for the city.
Have you surveyed the HOA in apartment buildings about the use of the current iteration of this service?
We have not surveyed them. We track it, or I get reports from Waste Management, and so we track it that way. So I have some data on that, if you're interested.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to, because I'd also like to link that to how much it's used, like the, you know, if the landlords are proactively providing information in a way that helps people utilize it, because it may be an education or communication deficiency. So when you come back, I'd be curious about how that's working. Vice Mayor?
I will just say, for a comment, that I learned about the bulk pickup through the city's Twitter account the last time I had actually learned about it. So it was through the city itself. It actually was not through my property management company. And so have you all been, Councilmember Pryfaris, were you ever, have you ever been alerted through Essex about any type of bulk waste pickup coming for tenants at all?
No, ma'am, but I always see those big mattresses outside on Overland every time someone moves out. So I appreciate you placing this on the future agenda and this becoming a priority for the city.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes, I would like to see the same data that you would like to see, Mayor Bowders, about how frequent the pickups are at the HOA through this, because I know our HOA does this bulk pickup, and we have these trailers. I think we have them once a month, but I don't know if it is something that the HOA pays outside of what the city provides.
Okay. Matt, do you feel like you have the information you need to come back with additional follow-up?
I do indeed. We can go ahead and get started on that.
Great. Thank you. Is there any further comment on this item? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:09. The meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.
For the benefit of the public, we have a couple very brief meetings to conduct regular business. We'll start at 7:14, so five minutes. Time is 7:14 PM. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members Services Authority. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public are welcome to join us here at Emeryville City Hall situated at 1333 Park Avenue, or joining us via Zoom, provided by- in the link in the agenda. I'll ask if the clerk would please begin by taking the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Here.
And Mayor Bouders?
Here. Now is the time to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting?
I move approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. Are there any ex parte communications for tonight's meeting? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to public comment. Public comment for consent items or items not on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to comment have two minutes to do so. Are there any hands raised? Seeing none, the public comment is now closed. Turn to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar. Is there any questions, comments, or wish to discuss the consent calendar item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve the agenda- I'm sorry, approve the calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda has been approved. The calendar has been approved. It's adjourned 7:16. 7:16 PM, I'd like to call to order the City of Emeryville Successory Agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. As was noted, this is a hybrid meeting. As was previously noted, all members remain present. Madam Clerk, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Welch, second by Carr to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. It's approved. Item five is public comment for the consent items or items that are not on this agenda. Any members of the public wishing to speak for the consent agenda for the redevelopment agency have two minutes to do so. Seeing no people present, no hands raised, public comment is closed. We'll turn to the consent calendar. There are two items, warrants and action minutes. Are there any comments, questions, or members who wish to discuss? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move consent.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Welch and a second by Carr to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The consent calendar is approved. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:17. That meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:17. I call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville's regular meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. And please note that this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Members of the public can join us at City Hall or via Zoom. Madam Clerk, please note all members remain present for this meeting. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve this agenda.
I'll move approval of this agenda.
I second.
Thank you. Motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. The agenda being approved. We'll move to item four, Special Orders of the Day. And 4.1 is a legislative briefing from our Assembly member, Mia Bonta. I would like to invite and welcome our honorable Assembly member for our district to the podium to provide a presentation on the legislative overview of her work on behalf of us and the constituents of Emeryville and the Capitol. Good evening, Madam Assemblywoman.
Thank you. It's so great to be with you all today, this evening. I am so proud to be able to say I get to represent the City of Emeryville in AD18. It's a great honor to be a new part of this, and I want to say thank you to my dear friends on the Emeryville City Council. Thank you for your commitment to serving our collective constituents here in this amazing, vibrant city. And I've been so impressed by Emeryville in the short time during the redistricting, and I want to particularly thank Mayor Bouders for the orientation and tour and the staff who came out to be with my staff and team and were with me in the very first days of my term in the district and- and was just really a representative beginning to what I think is going to be an amazing partnership. And I want to thank, as a Councilmember, Welch, for also inviting me to housing and planning meetings early on to just give me a really good feel for what Emeryville is all about. And I just want to say that during that time, I've- during this time, I've seen the amazing strides that this council has taken, particularly on housing justice, criminal justice reform, transportation, and advancing key climate initiatives. I call Emeryville the little jewel of California, because you are punching way above your weight in so many different ways. And I really appreciate the work that you've been able to pull together and that I call attention to a lot in the Assembly because of the work that you've done here. And it's because of the council leadership, your collaborative spirit, and the way that you're able to work together in such innovative ways. That's really quite powerful. And as Assembly member, I've served since September 2021, and this is by way of update to just kind of talk about some of the important measures that I've been able to carry through the first legislate- my first legislative session and to update our collective community about what is going on in Sacramento and tied to what's happening here in Emeryville. So during the 2021-2022 legislative session, 10 of my bills were chaptered and signed into law to support our neighborhoods, businesses, and residents. And as a member of the Legislative Black Caucus, the Legislative Women's Caucus, the Latino Legislative Caucus, and the Progressive Caucus, I am committed to working with my colleagues to push forward progressive policy and agenda as we move forward. Some of my key priorities in that first legislative session were accomplished not through legislation but through budget action, including Literacy for All, which awarded hundreds of millions of dollars towards family of literacy in particular. It Takes a Village, which was a $13 million grant to focus on place-based cradle-to-career initiatives and establishing an Office of Gun Violence Prevention. One of the first bills, AB 252, which was a floating homes Marina bill, ensured that tenant residents and families that live in floating homes at the Marina are protected by the Bay Area's skyrocketing prices of- price of living. And this will support Marina tenants and residents to remain housed and prevent predatory pricing as one of the last remaining affordable housing communities to remain. This bill sunsets in 2030, and I'm committed to protecting this community moving forward. I also wanted to- worked on AB 2750, which is legislation that would advocate for historically marginalized communities by directing the California Department of Technology to create a state digital equity plan to identify barriers to digital equity. And now in 2023, I have unapologetically led legislation that will continue to uplift our most vulnerable communities, not only in our district but throughout the state of California. Two weeks ago, we had our marathon Assembly floor session, and 12 of my bills moved on to the Senate. They are going through policy committees right now, and hopefully many of them will hit the Senate floor in a few weeks' time. And I'm continuing to uplift the life and legacy in that work of our beloved supervisor, Wilma Chan, with my version of food as medicine. This is something that she focused on in Alameda County, specifically AB 1644, so it requires medical plans to offer medically supportive food and nutrition as a covered benefit. AB 1644 would improve health outcomes and provide proactive and preventative health care costs. Currently, it is an optional benefit offered by some, but not all, and medical plans- medical plans in Alameda County. While this bill was held in appropriations due to cost, I am committed to carrying on her legacy and will continue to this fight and ensure that this bill gets passed and reintroduced in future years. A few bills that I am making a high priority for me in walking through the Senate right now. I wanted to uplift AB 793, a landmark bill to protect people seeking reproductive and gender-affirming care by prohibiting the use of geofencing and keyword reverse warrants that infiltrate and reveal our personal information. AB 793 is making California the leading sanctuary state for reproductive and gender-affirming care during this new post-Roe era. AB 1104, My Pathway to Community-Based Transformation Act seeks to clarify sentencing is for rehabilitation and reentry and not to inflict further punishment and continue to get people out of our carceral system, because 85% of people who go into prison come out of prison, and we want them to be able to be fully rehabilitated and to have opportunity to reenter. AB 1186 focuses on youth restitution, which addresses economic inequities for families who have the least financial means to pay to put an end to the harmful cycle of poverty and youth incarceration. And I'm looking to make sure that victims are made whole by providing a pathway for restitution from the Victim Compensation Board. Also, working closely with the Green Linings Institute, I am very proud to work on AB 1525, which seeks to require a minimum of 60% of transportation funds that would flow through the various state agencies and state funding forces, state funding sources to be allocated to priority highly impacted population communities, which would include Emeryville. And I would like to share a couple of legislative items around housing specifically. I know that it is a deep passion of this council. First, AB 1661 would streamline ADU installation by allowing the ADU to be on a master meter, creating more housing units, protecting tenants, and providing cities a pathway to exceed their housing element. You're already doing that, but another opportunity to continue to do that. Second, AB 846, which attempts to place a rent cap on units funded by the federal low-income housing tax credits, the Lytech dollars, which with various community-based organizations and nonprofit support. We'll need to bring this around in next legislative cycle, because we need to make sure that we're getting the rent cap right with all the stacked funding that happens for Lytech developers in particular. Before coming to an end of my presentation, I wanted to talk a little bit about the California state budget. So to put into context, California this year will pass the second-largest budget in California's history. That doesn't mean that we don't have a close to $30 million above, $30 billion and above deficit in in the amount of revenues that we projected. So I can proudly say that despite all that, I will continue to unapologetically fight to ensure that we focus on public transportation agencies facing the financial crisis that we're in due to the decline in ridership since the height of COVID-19. And we have successfully secured a budget allocation of $5.1 billion to ensure continued BART and AC Transit Services without disruption. As we continue to work with the governor's administration on the final set- state budget, which we're getting close to a third-party, three-party agreement any day now, I remain committed to further investments in- and not cuts around childcare systems, our public schools, investments in homelessness and housing to be able to support what we know we need to, and transportation. And further, I want to continue to push the allocation of state funding and grants for local city, county, and county agencies and community-based organizations and nonprofits to address neighborhood needs and provide essential services to meet their basic needs as a human right. I had the opportunity to submit several district-specific priorities for consideration for funding. I submitted the request to ensure that we included the city's 40th Street corridors improvement projects that will help create protected bike lanes and protect pedestrian safety. And I submitted the request for the full $9 million, because despite what the budget deficit is, this is a high priority for you, and so it's a high priority for me. And I remain hopeful that we will be able to get that done. And thank you so much for the time and for the work that you do and for the partnership that I know we have already started to enjoy and will continue to enjoy over the years. And just want to applaud you all for, again, being a shining star, and very proud to be able to represent the City of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. I'll open it for members of the council who'd like to ask questions on anything that was shared or make remarks or say anything. Vice Mayor Welch?
Just thank you for coming here in person and being able to see you and just giving us updates on what's going on and just letting us know your priorities. And thank you for the partnership.
Councilmember Cora?
I echo Vice Mayor's comments. Thank you so much, Assemblywoman Bonta. I really appreciate your being here and also approve- getting approval for our $9 million project funds. Thank you so much.
Member Pryforce?
I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership as it relates to- I'm a product of the Promise Neighborhoods out of New York. And so Oakland Promise and also the leadership of Libby Schaaf, you know, as mayor, she really helped to really push to make that happen as well. And so I don't know if you heard, but we're trying to do sort of an Emeryville Promise. And so thanks to the- the team at our community services, we are - we're currently exploring that. And so thank you for your leadership in- in making that regional. And if Governor Newsom doesn't recognize how awesome that is, well, that's on him.
I appreciate that. I actually have a Select Committee on, it's got a really long name, but it's supposed to be Promise Neighborhoods, but they wouldn't let me call it that. It's like the Select Committee on Coordinated Care and Services or something to that effect. And I think it's wonderful that you all are focusing in on that effort, and please call on me as you develop that vision.
Councilmember Mora, did you have any comments or questions for the Assemblywoman?
Uh, no specific comments. I just echo the comments of my colleagues. I appreciate you coming to the chambers and providing these updates. Thank you.
And Madam Assemblymember, I just want to thank you for diving in headfirst on all the issues so important to this district, as you opened housing, criminal justice reform, transportation, socioeconomic equity, education access. These are- these are the issues that this district really cares about. And as somebody who serves in a local capacity but also works professionally with leaders like yourself at the state level, it's very refreshing and reassuring to have a person like you representing us who understands the lived experience of people in our community, who has been in this community for a long time here in the East Bay and really has your pulse on- has the pulse on what's going on. I just also want to give a really special statement of appreciation for your efforts to continue the legacy of Wilma Chan. I know she's a fellow Alamedan to you, but as somebody who has lived through food insecurity and been in the human services space professionally for a very long time, I always felt a very deep debt of gratitude to Wilma for her outspoken leadership, both at the state level and here in the county, on health, human services, and in particular, food security. So I am also just deeply grateful that you are continuing that legacy of leadership here from our district. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I did just want to end by saying, one of the things I'm most proud of is our district team that really focuses on constituent services. So just wanted to kind of give a shout out to all those who are listening here, that you are my constituents and are our office's constituent. And when you are experiencing issues of concern where there's an intersection between the state and state agencies, and you believe that we might be able to be of service, please call your Assemblymember. And we have people ready and primed and very skilled at being able to help- help you. We've helped in EDD cases and a lot of the issues related to the- the housing moratorium and eviction moratorium that we are facing right now. And so please call on us, and we'll be there. Thank you.
And I will just reiterate for the public that are listening or watching at home that the Assemblywoman has the best staff. They are the best. I have spent a lot of time with them in a group and in one-on-ones, and you have some of the most amazing staff. So I would just second that. If you need something that the state can offer, please do not hesitate to reach out to her office.
Thank you. Appreciate you all and the time. Thank you.
Have a lovely evening. Thanks for joining us today. We'll take public comment on item four as a special order of the day, because the Assemblywoman was here. I'll recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes, please.
Yeah, I just, is this special- is this comment just for the- for Assemblymember Bonta's?
Yes, this is Special Orders of the Day. Yes.
I wanted to let Assemblymember Bonta know, first off, I live in Emeryville, so you are my Assemblywoman, and I want you to know that a specific council member, the one that you know, and that would be Vice Mayor Courtney Welsh, has a Twitter account. And on her Twitter account, public Twitter account, she called me a fuckboy, literally a fuckboy. And she said that because I called her a corporate Democrat because of her- her pro-yimby, sort of, you know, shameless pro-yimby advocacy. She's not advocating for hous- you know, housing, and she was basically pro-developer. So I mentioned that on my- on my news site, the Emeryville Tattler, and she called me a fuckboy. So that's pretty impolitic, and I don't think, Assemblymember Bonta, you would approve of that, but I thought you should know that, since you were just praising Councilwoman Welsh so much, so highly. You should know that that's how she treats some constituents that disagree with her. Fuckboy. Thank you very much.
Are there any written comments for this item, April?
No, Mayor, there are not.
That concludes item 4.1. Have a lovely evening, Madam Assemblymember Gelsor. Have a great evening. Take care. Okay, that'll move to item five. Okay, that'll move to item five, which is announcements of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk.
Mayor and council, just wanted to remind you that we have a application process open. It closes on Monday, June 26. We have 33 total vacancies, and we received 18 applications at this point.
Through June 26, we said?
Yes, Monday, June 26 at 5:00 p.m. Applications available on the website.
Okay, so members of the public interested in serving on a resident committee, you have an opportunity to serve the community right now. If you'd like to apply, please go to the city of Emeryville's website and go to the clerk's page. Is there a link on the left for committees? Is what it's on? Yeah, it's on the left. Member Pryforce.
Madam Clerk, when was the last time that was posted on Twitter or our social media?
We have a reminder going out at the end of the week, and then we do one on Monday also. But I think actually we could do it tomorrow as a reminder, and then one last push on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item six is council member's special announcements or reports on meetings and attendance. I'll start with Member Cora. Do you have any that you'd like to report on? Meetings? None. And Member Moore, do you have any that you'd like to report on?
No special meetings.
Okay, Member Pryforce.
I just want to thank our municipal leaders in cities like Oakland, Berkeley, Hayward, and so many others for their amazing Pride events and their amazing Juneteenth events. And it was great. Many of us joined you, and so I just want to say thank you for doing what you do to organize and celebrate with your communities.
Vice Mayor Welch, do you have anything you'd like to report?
No.
None? Okay. My only report will be that this past week I was in Washington, D.C., representing the Alameda County Transportation Commission in meetings with the Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway and Rail Administrations, the Department of Energy, the congressional delegation, and the committees that appropriate funds to jurisdictions locally and at the state level for the bipartisan infrastructure and IIJA bills, and made pitches for a number of applications we have pending and a couple we're about to submit. We recently received $15 million grant for San Pablo Avenue. We have a request for a $25 million raise grant, which I hope we'll get a favorable response on for the county next month for the East Bay Greenway. And we're going to be applying for additional funding for San Pablo Avenue through the Reconnecting Communities Grant Program. It was a very successful trip and be happy to answer any questions from any members of the public about that at a future time. Okay, item seven, city manager's report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Item eight, ex parte communications. Members, take a look at the agenda. If there's an item on this agenda for which you've had a substantive discussion with an applicant or a person party to the contract that you'd like to report as an ex parte communication, please state that for the record now. I'll start with Member Pryforce. Do you have any ex parte communications?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Member Cora, do you have any communications?
No.
Okay, Member Moore, do you have any to report?
None.
Okay, Vice Mayor Welch.
Let me get to the end. No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. Okay. And I have none to report either, Madam Clerk. We'll move to item nine, public comment for the consent agenda items and items that are not on this agenda. A member of the public looking to make comment for an item not on this agenda or the consent agenda has two minutes to do so. Are there any members of the public present who wish to make comment on the public comment? Okay, I'll turn to you online. I recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so in March, on March 19 of 2023, Mayor John Bouders said on his Twitter account, he said, "When someone else labels you, remember that it's usually because they're either incapable of recognizing you as a unique person capable of nuance or because their agenda isn't rooted in a good faith discourse to begin with." Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bouders said that in March. And to that, I asked the mayor now, and you can answer, the Brown Act permits you to answer. So if that being what you believe, why then, Mr. Mayor, did you call me publicly at a meeting, did you call me an ableist? That's a label, that's something you labeled me with, ableism. You called me an ableist from the dais. So given that statement you made in your Twitter account, and you've got 95 likes on that, by the way, why would you call me an ableist? It's complete hypocrisy. Further, your colleague, Courtney Welsh, called me a fuckboy, as I just mentioned to the, sorry, sir. And you just sat there and you didn't say anything about it. So there you go, a label. I was labeled as a fuckboy by your friend and colleague. And then, of course, Diane Martinez, a member of the Plen Commission, called me a nimby from the dais. So, you know, all these labels thrown out from on high down to us peons, us, you know, public speakers and what have you, and it's pretty unseemly. But I just want to know, how do you justify that? How do you square that with your statement you made, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for your comment.
In March.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll turn to the consent calendar. Mr. Carpio, did you want to comment? You can come up.
My name is Andre Carpio. I'm a former Emeryville resident. The city wrecked my house and trashed all my tools and all my machines, everything that I was making an ivory hood with, everything was dumped. And everything, it's just nothing I can do because when you are confronted with five police, Emeryville police, your gun on their shoulder, there is nothing you can complain about, you know? I guess I'm still happy to be alive and to tell about it. But that destroyed, that gave my son a real bad feeling. He passed away, by the way, but not on account of that, but other things. But this is distressful. And also, what I just heard, that people call each other names. What kind of name did you give me? I mean, I'm working it, is it a sin? I don't know. Anybody call me name here? I'm just looking around. Maybe it's just odd for me to hear what I heard from Brian Donahue. So I really would like the city council to exercise some civility about treating people. And I've been a victim of that, not from this council, but previous council. You know, they raided me, they took everything that I was making a lovely with, everything, everything that I do, work with my hand, my machine, and all my instruments. So I'm sure you would see that, like I did, that it was a professional bias view, a view that they did not understand and tolerate people who worked on machinery.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Carpio. Thank you for your comment.
But I'm sorry, I was brought up like that.
Mr. Carpio? Mr. Carpio? Time, we're at time.
So, sorry to take your time over time. Thank you. I hope you get paid for it.
Thank you. I'm going to wait for him to put his earphones back on. Okay, we'll turn to the consent calendar. Items 10.1 through 10.10 inclusive are before you for consent. Are there any members who wish to ask questions about items on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Councilmember Cora to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cora?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye, thank you. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Emeryville adding Chapter 15 to Title IV of the Emeryville Municipal Code. Private parking facilities' sequoet determination is exempt. Presentation will be by Chad Smalley, and welcome, Mr. Smalley.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, and Chad Smalley, Deputy Director of Community Development, here to talk about an ordinance that would add Chapter 15 to Title IV entitled private parking facilities. Man, why don't you want to advance? There we go. Going to go over a brief background of how we got to this point, and then I'll walk through the proposed ordinance and close with staff's recommendation and the next steps. So the background on this, back in spring of 2021, CenterCal Properties purchased the Bay Street Shopping Center from UBS, and very nearly immediately began investing in the transformation of that center and repositioning it. Those improvements included re-tenanting and reconfiguring the food terrace, gaining entitlements for grocery store and revamped plaza, and also painting of the buildings and modernization of the parking system, which is the focus of today's discussion. The parking modernization included new meters that would accept credit cards, replacing the old coin-based meters. They engaged a new parking operator to manage their parking, and they replaced the pay gates for the garages with a pay-by-space system, which I'll get into the differences. Access-controlled garages are using gates, and they have benefits and drawbacks. The drawbacks are that they're a little less convenient for motorists because you know that you'll be encountering a gate, you have to pull a ticket, you maybe have to stand in line, and then you have to pay that ticket in order to get out of the garage. That can cause some queuing issues during peak hours when it's particularly busy, both in and getting out of the garage. But it minimizes the enforcement costs because the only way you can get in is if you pull a ticket, and the only way you can get out is if you paid for that ticket to get through that gate. In contrast, the gateless systems, which are, you know, pay-by-space, where all the spaces are numbered, they're more customer-friendly because you just drive up and you park, and you don't have to deal with waiting in line, you don't have the queuing issues, and then you pay at a pay station or by an app. And the downside to this is that in order to make sure that people pay, you have to have some kind of enforcement of the interior of the garage. So the way that's accomplished is through what's called mail-in parking charges, which are basically tickets. You want to enforce the parking and not just allow for the free flow of it without paying because if you don't, people will just overstay. It doesn't allow you to manage the parking for turnover to make sure that spaces are available and appropriately priced. And in the case of Bay Street, those revenues that are collected on the paid parking are an important component of the overall operation and maintenance budget for the center. As it turns out, the state law under the California Vehicle Code, or CVC, at 21107.8 has a provision that allows cities to adopt ordinances that declare that certain private parking facilities are generally held open to the public. And if the city adopts one of these ordinances, certain sections of the California Vehicle Code apply to the facilities described in the ordinance, and those ordinances may include and provide for owner enforcement of private parking through mail-in parking charges. So it's an enabling legislation. CenterCal, as part of their parking modernization, has requested that the city adopt an ordinance under 21107.8, applicable to the Bay Street garages. We took a preliminary draft ordinance to the Budget and Governance Committee in February, and a couple of concerns were raised by that committee. One was regarding driver behavior, undesirable driver behavior, meaning like sideshow-type activities or general rowdiness in these garages, and whether the removal of the gates would facilitate or encourage that kind of behavior. As I mentioned, so we looked into this as a response to the committee's comments. And as I mentioned, there are codes in the CVC that'll apply to facilities that are covered by this ordinance, including reckless driving, racing, and speeding. In talking with the Police Department about those sections and about how the CVC generally already applies to private parking facilities that are held open to the public, their position is that existing law provides some enforcement tools for them to deal with that kind of behavior regardless, and that the CVC sections would provide them additional tools. And so in combination, they have sufficient authority to deal with any undesirable type of behavior that occurs in these kinds of facilities. The second topic raised by the committee was really around fairness and objectivity in applying the enforcement. The ordinance has a dispute resolution process laid out in general that requires written procedures to be submitted to the city for approval, and I'll get into this in a little more detail later. But we changed the preliminary draft that we presented to the committee to deal with that concern. So an overview of the proposed ordinance. It applies only to the Bay Street garages, not Bay Street proper, just the enclosed areas, as well as the private parking garages, both existing and proposed, and lots at the Marketplace redevelopment. The reason for this is when we received this request from CenterCal, staff went out to the major shopping centers, inquired whether this is something they were interested in participating in. Other than CenterCal, only City Center/Oxford at Public Market was interested in pursuing this for both their future garages as well as their existing lots where they do have time limits. The ordinance enables parking operators to enforce through the mail-in parking charges. It defines, the ordinance defines unauthorized parking only as the failure to pay or parking beyond the amount of time that was paid for. The mail-in charge amount cannot exceed whatever the city's parking citation amounts are. Currently, the city's parking citations are $58. We understand that Bay Street intends to charge $30 for a mail-in parking charge, and at Marketplace it's $43. Signage, obviously, is required that complies with very specific provisions in the CVC about notifying drivers that this charge could be assessed to them. And the notice of charge, that is, the actual envelope that's put on the car, has to be clearly differentiated and spelled out in the ordinance from the cities. We don't want folks to be confused about whether it's the city's ticket or whether it's being issued by the private parking operator. The dispute resolution process I alluded to earlier, and I'll go into it in a little more detail here. If someone gets a mail-in parking charge and they feel like, wait, I paid, or that's not right, they can request an initial review. It's free, and they can do that within 21 days of being issued the mail-in charge. They are required to receive a response within 30 days of receipt of that request by the parking operator, and the operator can just dismiss the charge, yes, we made a mistake, or say, no, you did park overtime, or there was a violation, and provide the reasons for upholding the charge, as well as instructions for how to request an appeal or an administrative hearing on that citation or that mail-in parking charge. The request for administrative hearing, folks will pay the amount as part of the request, and that is to occur within 21 days. You have to request the hearing after getting the initial determination. There also has to be written procedures explained to folks how they can request hardship, request basically for allowing a hearing to happen without paying the charge. That hearing is to take place within 90 days of the request, either by mail or in person at the requester's option, that is, the person that received the charge. And that hearing is to be conducted by a trained, qualified examiner that's independent of the parking operator. That final decision is then mailed with the reasons if it's denied or obviously if it's overturned or refunded. Operators, in order to avail themselves of this ordinance, have to register with the city, and the city has to approve the written procedures. All of that stuff that I just explained about dispute resolution has to be written out in a set of dispute resolution procedures that get submitted to the city. In that, they have to provide for objective, fair, impartial reviews. The city may, and this is where we address the committee's concern, if the city receives evidence that this ordinance is not being applied fairly or objectively, the city may rescind its approval of those procedures, and at that point, no longer can the parking operator issue mail-in parking charges, not until they've corrected in writing the issue and have gained reapproval by the city for their new process. This ordinance is modeled after similar ordinances. Areas around us that have this same kind of ordinance include Walnut Creek, Lafayette... Creek, Lafayette, and Pleasant Hill. There are some slight differences between what we have proposed and those ordinances, predominantly around, uh, the scope of unauthorized parking. As I mentioned in the beginning, this only applies if you stay overtime or didn't pay. In those other cities, they have slightly wider scopes of what is called unauthorized parking, meaning if you parked in a loading zone, or on a red curb, or you generally blocked people, or something like that. The other provision, the other, uh, difference is that we don't have late fee provisions in this ordinance. Uh, those other cities that are on the screen do. Uh, it was, uh, city attorney's advice that, um, to us not to include these two, wider scope of unauthorized parking and late fee provisions, um, to, uh, avoid the risk of challenge, legal challenge of this ordinance. So, in closing, staff recommends, uh, that the City Council hold its, hold a public hearing, and then waive first reading and introduce by title only. Uh, should you do that, the next steps would be a second reading on July 5th. This ordinance wouldn't become effective until 30 days hence, which is August 4th, uh, of this year. Um, if you have any questions, happy to answer it. I know that we have folks on the phone from both, uh, I believe, from both City Center and from CenterCal, and we also have CenterCal's parking operator here with us today, if you have questions that are more appropriate or specific to them. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Okay, the only, uh, before we take public comment, uh, the only question I have is, do, are we expecting a presentation by any of them? I'm not assuming that, right?
No.
Okay, so we'll just take their comments as part of public comment. So, this is a public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, the time is 7:56. The public hearing is now open. All members of the public who wish to comment on the public hearing for Agenda Item 11.1 will have two minutes to do so. I'll recognize Brian Donahue first, please, for two minutes.
Okay, you should definitely not do this. Why? Because Emeryville will be working for Bay Street Corporation, whatever the name of it is. We, we'll be using our tax dollars and our resources and our time to, to help the profit motive of the Bay Street Corporation. This is not something a public agency, agencies should be doing. Okay, unless Emeryville gets all the proceeds from the tickets, then I say, sure, let's do it. But it sounds like it's not gonna be the case, so, no, don't do this. We don't, we're not here to work for Bay Street Corporation. Okay, and then, and then, secondly, I wanted to say, this will not be applied fairly or equitably, because this is, we're talking about, this is Bay Street, Bay Street Corporation. Every time I look into anything that they're doing, I find that they're doing it something illegally. Like, like, for 22 years, they're driving their, their, their cars, your little security cars, without licenses or registration or proof of insurance. For 22 years, they're doing it. Finally, they, they took them off our street, uh, because I complained. But, and then they're renting out public parking spots for vendors. This, this is a scamming corporation. They're going to screw this up. Don't do it. Last thing I wanted to say, if, if, the way that works right now, parkers do not have to pay, because there's a, a private dispute between two, uh, private parties, and you don't have to pay. I just got, my, my wife just got a ticket there, and I'm not gonna pay. And if they want, if they want their money, they can take me to court. But, only do this if Emeryville collects all the money. Otherwise, we are working now for corporations. I mean, that, that is really a horrible place for us to be. It's already, we are already so pro corporate, corporation and Emeryville. I hate the idea of us actually now working directly materially for corporations.
Okay, the next speaker will be Cassandra Kay, please, two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can, welcome.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Um, I'm Cassandra, I'm with City Center Realty Partners, I'm the General Manager at Public Market Emeryville, and I just wanted to, um, speak in favor of this ordinance to preserve parking for the patrons of the food hall. The food hall, as everyone knows, is comprised of many small businesses. We also have other small business retailers at the site, and all of those entities would greatly benefit by this ordinance, so we're in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who have not yet spoken that wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:59. The public hearing is adjourned and closed, and I will turn back to the council for further discussion and deliberation. Are there any council members who wish to give comment? Recognize Councilmember Mora first, please.
Um, I just had a question about, um, I, I'm wondering what's changed with regard to the prepaid parking, um, because I know there's been prepaid parking at Bay Street for at least over 20 years, I believe, in the northern, uh, parking lot. There were, um, meters there. Um, how co, what's, uh, why do we need something different, um, when the, this is prepaid parking has been in place? Is there somebody who can speak to that from, uh, CenterCal?
I think, yeah, Chad, would you like somebody else to answer that question, or do you need additional information?
Um, I would like clarity on if the council member is referring to the metered spaces on the first floor of the north parking structure?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, that make, that makes sense. If, um, yeah, if someone from CenterCal or ParkSmart might be better positioned to, um, I'd, I'd, it's my understanding that that doesn't change. The way those are enforced is still through meters instead of pay-by-space.
But it's still prepaid, right? It's a similar concept. Somebody gets a ticket there, it's been, however that plays out, it's been that way for 20 years.
Introduce yourself, please.
Hi there, my name is Daniel Toth, I'm from ParkSmart. Uh, just wanna say thank you guys for having us and for putting together the ordinance and all the work the staff has done on it. Uh, to answer your question, council member, those meters, the operation hasn't changed. I believe we actually reduced the number of meters that were in that garage and introduced some mobile payment that people can pay on their phones. The prepaid portion is the same. The main difference here is that now the entirety of the property is prepaid parking. I believe there's around 3,000 spaces, and the spaces that you're referring to are approximately 100 of those, so the remaining 2,000-plus spaces are now prepaid, and that's the biggest difference for why this ordinance is needed.
Councilmember Mora, do you have follow-up questions for the, uh, member, the man who just spoke?
Well, maybe just drilling into that, what, what was the, what was parking, were those tickets that were, what was the parking enforcement taking place in that subset of spaces? Was that not working for 20 years?
Yeah, so that, the lower level of the e-garage, and I'm not actually sure if CenterCal can speak to this more, um, I'm actually not sure that they were being enforced. They were there, and I think people were paying them.
They were. I've gotten tic, I've gotten tickets there. They were enforced.
Do you know where you, uh, received those?
Paid prepaid, I've paid tickets.
Do you know what entity off, um, cited you or provided those tickets?
I, I do not. I, I don't know the entity, no.
Yeah, sorry, prior to ParkSmart's operation, I'm actually not sure how it was enforced in the past.
I'm gonna recognize Izmar Hook from Base, Bay Street and CenterCal. Please recognize her as, uh, to respond to the question. Good evening, Izmar.
Good evening, Mayor Routers. Thank you, Danny, and also. Uh, so, the particular reason, um, that we need to have this, uh, this, uh, ordinance changed is because we have to have a method of which to enforce them via a ticket, and although you may have received a ticket previously in that e-meter garage, it wasn't enforceable, um, with the formal ordinance, and this ordinance would make it enforceable.
How does the ordinance make it enforceable? I thought it just means you get to mail people. I, I, you can still put a ticket on their windshield, right?
That's correct. You can still get a physical ticket. Um, and Danny, do you wanna mention the process?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that, I misunderstood your question, council member. Uh, so, the current process, you're not given a ticket. It's essentially an all-day rate charge, and by prepaying for parking, you're paying for a discount from that all-day rate charge. If you don't prepay for parking, then you assess the all-day rate charge, which is currently set at $30. The ordinance follows the state law that was passed and puts the restrictions into place that Mr. Smalley mentioned. It does a lot more, um, there's a lot better restrictions and clearer language that makes it easier to understand for the public, and then also lets the city dictate and actually approve whether or not they feel like we're doing a, a good job with our dispute procedures and some of the other things that need to be, uh, approved. So, it takes the current process that we're doing, and it formalizes it. Um, it sort of subjects us to more review by the city.
Sorry, I think I'm still just confused. You, you put the ticket on someone's windshield. What, what does it matter if they keep receiving reminders in the mail, or I guess increased fine?
So, the, the mail-in parking charge is essentially the ticket that you're referring to. What goes on the windshield is by name the mail-in parking charge. It's the customer that mails it in. It's not being mailed to them. Sorry, is that the confusion?
Yeah, but what's, the enforce, sorry, how's the enforceability different? That's, maybe that, I'm not following that correctly.
So, sorry, the enforceability, um, isn't different. It's really the procedures around it. That's now governed by the ordinance that falls under the state law, that has a lot more structure than the current, uh, practice of using an all-day rate that you pay for a discount off of. So, it's a, it's a similar practice, but the ordinance creates the procedures that we have to follow and, um, gives the customer a better idea of what to expect and outlines the expectations of everyone.
Okay, thanks.
Other members who have questions? Member Pryforce?
So, um, who are you? I mean, you introduced yourself, but who are you in relationship to Bay Street?
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm, uh, I'm Daniel Toth from ParkSmart. ParkSmart, Inc. is the operator that Bay Street Emeryville uses to operate their parking.
Okay, so you're the vendor?
Yes, we're the vendor.
Okay, got it. Okay, so, what we're dealing with, and I, I can actually hear, uh, in Councilmember Mora, my colleague's, uh, voice, a, a bit of the confusion, and what I'm concerned about is that, um, I, when I, when I reviewed this over the agenda, I thought this was a, kind of a simple, I had most some concerns about the pricing, uh, the, in terms of the fees, uh, compared to the city's fees, uh, but now I have some concerns in terms of usability. Um, and I wanna get this right, because, um, there's a whole, not a whole lot that we do here that affects my 15-year-old daughter, uh, and, uh, but this one, the last thing I want is for her to look at me and go, you approved this? You know, and so, um, and, and I think it's really important to make the distinction between Bay Street and Bay Street's relationship with the city, with the, what Bay Street is asking, um, uh, so does Bay Street and CenterCal, uh, and then also your product, right? And so, uh, so from a product, uh, usability, um, right now, when I am, you know, because my daughter usually leaves, you know, and she's gonna kill me for exposing her like this, she usually, uh, forgets her glasses, or she, uh, forgets, uh, something, uh, and so, when we get to the parking lot, uh, in order to catch that, um, you know, the, the latest Spider-Verse movie, uh, the, the issue is that, uh, we have to, we usually get to the, uh, to the base, uh, to AMC, and then we go, ah, God, we forgot the parking number, right? And then we have to go back down and look at the parking number. Now, why is this important? It's because from a product development stand, standpoint, um, Bay Street, Bay Street has, and I, and I remember sending, um, uh, the, the city manager and I ran into one of my neighbors who, um, who is, uh, who, who is in a wheelchair, and they can't get part, past that part of the sidewalk, uh, because there's a light, I think, in front of this, uh, is that putty, putty, the putty, um, place? Um, there's, is a light that's there, right? And so, um, so already from my vantage point as a, a longtime resident of Emeryville, and a longtime resident of Emeryville, and so I'm judging, um, uh, Bay Street by not being, I believe, the best community steward. Anything that Bay Street does tends to be, uh, for, for, uh, Bay Street. Um, and also, knowing that my neighbor has had this experience, so no one actually walked the sidewalk and thought, hey, let's think about, um, wheelchair access and whether or not we're blocking something from, from other people. And, and, uh, and if we did communicate to Bay Street about that, and it's still there, then, um, then that, that's what I'm concerned about, is that your product may need not just a presentation that we probably will see from, from a, some sort of slideshow, but maybe some of us as council members, so actually, you walk us through this process. Set up a mock enforcer, and, and let us know, uh, going in and out, like, what the experience is going to be, and because that's the experience that our, uh, our neighbors are going to have. And when I wanna make sure that, um, from a product, for product, you know, sort of, you know, means test, that, um, that, um, sort of A/B testing, that you, you guys have really thought about what the experience is, because this probably would have, even the issue of the parking number, if you, if y'all just raised the number, uh, the, um, the number of the parking spot, right? Like, so, so we not, we're not having to actually look down and look at a parking spot, or make sure that the car isn't blocking the park, you know, and that sort of thing, right? And so, there's just some missteps when it comes to actual user testing and, and actually people, what their, what their experience is. And so, um, and I can hear it in my, my, my colleague's voice, and that's what I'm concerned, I'm concerned about, that we will, um, that we will, you know, through this process, um, that it stays on paper and it's not actually the lived experience of what it is. And so, uh, so during this process, um, this approval process, um, yeah, I don't, I don't see too big of an issue of it in terms of the, uh, collaboration, relationship. It's just, I wanna make sure that you include something like that, um, so that we get an idea of what will be the actual experience of those who will be going through, uh, going through this. Even if it's a, even a matter of, well, what happens if somebody has a bad cellphone signal? Like, what happens if somebody, you know, because you are in a parking structure, right? And so, what happens, you know, like, all, all these different questions. Um, I, I mean, that would be great.
Are there any other members who have questions or comments? Member Cor?
Yes, there is, uh, an aspect of the convenience, I think. Is this, um, first of all, I think it may already be in place, this, this procedure, because I do remember, uh, my colleague, Member Mora, he, what he said, that's what I would do. I would just prepay and, um, go and get my shopping done and go back to my car. I wouldn't have to remember any num, numbers. And recently, when I went there, I saw that I had to change my whole routine. I went thinking that I would be prepaying, and then a, a nice lady, she, she told me, make sure you remember the number, because we had to go all around to look for a car and remember the number, and we wasted so much time, and it was inconvenient. So, just from a convenience perspective, this doesn't seem something that would serve the residents of Emeryville. So, and I have to, I have to say that I did like the, um, the procedure that was in place before. It was much more convenient, and it was le, less costly even based on this present, presentation to enforce. Um, so, um, I am a little, yeah, uh, I'm a little confused as to why we need this ordinance at this, and I also, the question I actually have is about the history. Who is the person who initiated this ordinance, and what was the reason for that, and how did it come about?
Mr. Smalley?
I can take the last question. Um, so, as I mentioned, CenterCal approached us with, with the request with regard to their, their overall parking modernization. I wanna be clear, though, that these, these charges are being issued today. This, this, if you overstay at Bay Street, you'll get an envelope on your window. The same thing will happen at Public Market. If you, and although you don't pay at Public Market, if you overstay in the lot, you can get a ticket. You get a ticket from Douglas, and, uh, that's their parking operator. And it's our position that, right now, those aren't enforceable, like, because we have not adopted this ordinance to allow for private enforcement of those lots. So, what we're trying to do is make it so that they are enforceable, and they're lined up, and they're, and they're able to actually run these parking programs. up, and they're able to actually run these parking programs that they've already started.
And this is Isamar Hook.
I'm sorry, I've not, I'm sorry, I have not recognized you. Do not speak unless I've called on you, please. Recognize Vice Mayor Welch.
So Chad, just to clarify, the ordinance is only about the enforceability of the overstaying, whatever they might be getting ticketed for. It is just, it's not about the functionality of the actual, which I don't necessarily agree or disagree with anyone's concerns about the functionality and the convenience, but this is just about being able for Douglas or ParkSmart to enforce whatever parking violations they've been ticketed for within those parking garages.
Yes, narrowly as defined by this ordinance. So only if you've overstayed time, or you didn't follow the time, or you stayed over, or you didn't pay, or you didn't stay for as long as you paid for, or you stayed longer than you paid for, those are defined as parking violations, and this allows them to issue a mail-in parking charge if that occurs. This does not mandate or speak to the technology that they use about how they do it. And I apologize because I may have confused the matter by talking about gateless and all of this stuff. What I'm getting at there is that you have to have, if you go away from a gated system, you have to have some way of enforcing the time limits, and this is the way you do it.
Right. Thank you.
Recognize Councilmember Mora?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so I think it's, and maybe summarize, I do hear where Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Pryforce are coming from, and just to kind of expand a little bit, I've left less of an issue with the ordinance itself than having the city essentially provide its blessing to a potentially bad implementation. And there's two things I want to highlight with this, and maybe this is specific to ParkSmart. You know, I had, I actually have an outstanding ticket in the garage because I didn't understand the system. I was running late taking my kids to see the Mario movie, and we got into the movie, we saw a two-hour movie, and I got a $36 ticket, right? Because I didn't have time to install the app and figure out all the details, upload my license plate number and all of that. The next time I came back, I, and actually at that time, I actually tried to dispute the ticket. I don't remember being able to get ahold of anybody. Out of curiosity, I called again to explain what I thought was a rather sympathetic situation. You know, I don't aspire to be any sort of scoff law. And I got a voicemail box. I called at 11:00 this morning. So I'm concerned that maybe ParkSmart is not set up to provide the level of customer service that I think deserves the city's blessing. Maybe a silver lining to all of this, the next time I went there, I actually did pay the ticket because I figured out the app on my own time, and, or I paid the, prepaid the parking, and it went rather smoothly. So I think there is a learning curve, and maybe people are learning all of it slowly. And I did also find out that my wife had been there on her own. She could not figure out the parking system. I explained it to her, I gave her the app, so she may or may not have another, have a parking ticket associated with that. So perhaps, you know, this is something that as people learn, they might begin to better negotiate, but as private individuals with whoever the operator is, if Center Cal retains ParkSmart and their level of customer service and implementation. So those are my two comments on that.
Recognize Councilmember Cor?
Chad, I appreciate you clarifying that it is, it is the way of enforcement, but the present, the gated system, I do actually recognize the merit of you putting it in there, that what we have currently is the gated system, so.
No, we don't.
No.
I'm sorry if that wasn't clear. They took out the gates already.
Oh, they already, without the ordinance being approved, they took out the gates.
Correct. The ordinance has no bearing on the gates, though. That's not the matter.
Can I intervene at this point? I would like to just clarify this because I don't think it's been made clear. So the current, the prior system was one of essentially, tickets were issued, but there was no legal enforceability behind the issuance of a ticket. So it didn't matter which system was used, whether it was pay at the gate, pay at the stall number, pay via an app. It was irrelevant as a system because they would give you, you'd either pay one way or the other, whether you're paying one way or the other, it didn't matter. If you got a ticket, whatever the ticket was for, you were paying it basically voluntarily. You didn't know that, but there was no way that if you challenged it, they could legally make you pay it. So like Councilmember Morris' ticket, he doesn't have to pay it. They can't legally do anything about that right now. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually understood that part. I understood that part, but to me, the fact is the vendor made these changes without, you know, considering, taking into consideration all these things that they may overstay, and now we have to charge them extra, and we'd have to send them the mail-in ticket, whereas they were, they were, they were the gates in place, they were all these measures in place, where they wouldn't have gotten out without paying the complete, which would have been more convenient for everyone, for the vendor, for the people in the city who don't have to get this extra app. So I actually recognize that there, what is happening now is post facto, that they want to enforce this because they have made these changes, and now they want the city to follow what is convenient for them, not what is convenient or has been convenient for the city, which I think is not very customer-driven to the city, to Member Mora's point. So I would say that if you want to collect that, put the gates back, or put whatever was in place back.
So the only thing I'll say, just to be clear, is that they have made, you're correct that they made the decision as an infrastructure item, but there were other conveniences that they were taking into account, is what I heard in the presentation, which was lines of people queuing inside the garage to pay on the way out, lines of people queuing to get in. I'm going to finish, please. And that combination of that led to them deciding that that type of system was not actually leading people to use the garage, or it was not conducive to business operations. And so they made a decision that, yes, to your point, was in their interest. I'm not disagreeing with you about that, but I would just say it's the offset of the conveniences they chose to make. And I think there's also just a reflection of the modernization of parking enforcement. Listen, as a person who doesn't drive and has never used any of these garages, I have zero horse in this race, and I don't know, I haven't gotten a ticket in my entire life, so I don't have any idea what Councilmember Mora's experience is like. But I will just say that, that being said, you know, the reality is that when you go down the streets now, you see in like Berkeley and other cities, there's green signs, park, there's a five-digit number sometimes, or whatever, use an app. So it may be that this experience, what I'm hearing him say, is like it wasn't intuitive, or that people didn't have an app, or whatever. So there may be implementation issues that don't, that aren't customer-friendly, or not, you know, the most conducive to immediate use. But it does, the sense I have, just as an observer, is that there is a movement towards, you know, removing gates and arms, and giving people the ability on their own time to do this, and that this is the enforcement, that the enforcement mechanism is now this other type of ticketing system if you don't pay. And in making this change, they're looking to have enforceability with it for transparency. I'm going to allow you to briefly respond before I go to the Vice Mayor.
I think I understand what you're saying, but again, because I do drive a car, the thing is, what I was trying to say to you is, this queuing issue is something I've never seen when I've been there. I've never seen a queuing issue, and I do go to the, I'm not there every single day. I do admit I'm not there every single day. I'm there frequently. I'm there frequently enough to know that I've never seen a queuing issue. So this mystifies me as to why this is even something that's a concern. I don't know how often you go there, but I don't, I mean, if you have seen a queuing issue, I would have no reason to doubt you.
I haven't seen it since they removed the gates.
I have seen it before.
Yeah, before I did.
So I frequented and been going there since I was a teenager. There were quite often issues like that on busier nights.
Recognize the Vice Mayor.
I just, Chad, I want to just have a clarifying question on the ordinance itself, and maybe this can kind of help balance, because it feels like it's a lot of focus on the implementation, which again, I don't disagree with, but also this ordinance would allow for Center Cal to issue other different types of parking violations, correct?
Just for over.
Just for over? Okay, so.
Yeah, just for failure to pay.
Okay, just for paying? So if they were, if someone was in there with like a handy, they didn't have a handicap placard, and they were parked in the handicap spot?
That's enforceable anyway.
That's enforce, okay, so then we don't even have to worry about that specific piece, or, you know, someone parked in, you know, "Do not park here," and they're parked, you know, in some type of loading zone, that type of situation. This is just specifically about the timing itself.
Exactly. And the other, absent this, their only remedy is to tow your car. So that's, that's the, that's the enforcement mechanism that's available to private owners of parking lots if someone's parking in violation of what they, of their rules. Unless you adopt this ordinance, in which case you can do a mail-in parking charge.
Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cor?
I still didn't get the answer to, what was the history of this thing? How did this come about? I never got the answer to that question.
Senator Cal approached us after, as part of their modernization of the parking. Senator Cal approached us.
Yeah, I think you did mention it.
Showed us, that's okay. And they, we asked, you know, we did some research, found the other ordinances in other similar cities, looked at those, drafted one, and then I did outreach to the other shopping center owners, trying to understand the scope of what this might, where the interests might be, and did get a reception from Public Market as well.
Member Pryforce?
So, I mean, yeah, that could be a doomed scenario of getting your car towed, but, towed, but you have enough cars towed, then we're all replaced. And so the people can fight back, right? And so when it comes to, so I'm going to talk to you guys, like, you know, someone who's from the startup tech world, you know, the products needs iteration, right? Like, that's, I think that that's what's, what is that, that's what's happening, is that, what we're saying is that the enforceable part just makes it look like a seedy indoors product. But at the same, but at the same time, the experience of the user, you know, from a customer development standpoint, is they receive something in the mail, and they go, "What the hell?" And, you know, and then they go, "Why is the city coming at me like this for a crappy product?" Right? For experience that could be a lot better. And so that's why, like, I think, so far, I've not heard a lot of resistance to the idea of the enforcement. But what we're saying is that we want the enforcement, you know, in terms of the backing of the city, to match a better quality product. And I know, Isamar, you've probably been on hold for a while, but I think that that's just the experience that I think a lot of us are expressing. And I used to live at Bay Street, and, you know, and I'm a Marvel head, and so I was there before that you could assign seating, and so I would have a chair set up to watch the next Iron Man movie, right? And so I know that there can be a queue, but when people can, would rather prefer a queue compared to this situation that we have now, where there's a lot of confusion, and because, at least with the, yeah, so that's, so I think that that's what it is, is that we would prefer that you guys, you know, iterate, talk to, you know, go back and forth with, do some testing, come back, you know, to us, you know, have us, you know, to kind of go through, walk through the experience, and then we can go, "Okay, yeah," then the city can now enforce some of this stuff that's going on in terms of, you know, the mail-in and that sort of thing. And I think that that's what it is, is that we, I can speak, I'll speak for myself. I don't want to enforce an inferior product when I believe that the people of Emeryville and also our guests can get better.
Okay. This isn't an application from an applicant. This is a city ordinance. So I see there are hands raised, but I've already received public comment from those speakers, so I'm not going to call on the speakers unless there is a question for them. They are not applicants. This is not an ordinance for Bay Street or Center Cal or the Public Market. So Cassandra and Isamar, your hands will go down because you have already spoken. We don't give multiple times to speak unless there is a question for Bay Street or for the Public Market. I don't see, you have a question?
I have a question for you.
Turn your microphone on, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, maybe Chad, you can answer that. You said Cal, Cal.
Center Cal?
Center Cal approached you. Is Public Market, they have the same vendor?
They do not have the same vendor.
No.
Okay, but Public Market has a different vendor, but they also trying to get this app, or get the same, or what I'm trying to understand, is it, is there the same app citywide that can be used?
No, and no, and I want to be super clear about this because I've heard a few things. The city is not enforcing this. This is not about the city enforcing these regulations.
Understood.
This is the private operator, and they can choose whoever they want, but what this ordinance does do is makes whatever they issue enforceable and requires them to get registered with the city and to go through their processes.
Understood, and I thank you so much for that clarification. So basically what I'm hearing is that if we had 10 different places where people went to shop, and they had 10 different vendors, we would download 10 different apps for getting this thing enforced through the city, correct?
Correct. Fortunately, this only applies to two properties.
Yes, I understand. I was just making, making the point. So, thank you.
Are there any other members who wish to ask questions or make comments? If not, this is a public hearing, and this is an action item. If there is a member who wishes to make a motion on the ordinance, you can do so. Would make a motion to read by title only if appropriate, please. Last call for Councilmember Mora.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion. I just wanted to reiterate that I think this ordinance, in the absence of the specific enforcement mechanism, is what, where I have my misgivings, because we don't want to bless a bad implementation, or something that could be construed as hostile to the people who we serve. So, you know, I'm not opposing this necessarily in the future or in all instances, but in this instance, I would like to make a motion to not adopt this ordinance.
So typically, if we're going to not approve something, we simply take no action. There's not a motion to deny something. It's, we just, I call for motions. If there's nobody willing to make a motion to approve it, it's, I'll move to the next agenda item, it's dead. So are you wishing to make a motion of some kind? If not?
So moved.
So we have a motion from Vice Mayor Welch to, I'm assuming, read by title only?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to second the motion to read by title only. I want to be clear what the motion is. All it is, is allowing the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, so we do not have to go through the process of reading the entire ordinance. So voting yes on this motion does not approve the ordinance, correct, Madam City Attorney?
Correct.
All it's allowing us to do is spare the throat of the city attorney from reading the entire ordinance. Okay, so there's a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by the mayor to read by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Sorry, because I have not done this before. I want to make sure what I'm saying, a or nay to.
You're just letting her literally read this paragraph, that's it. In an ordinance, we have to just let, the city attorney either has to read the entire Emeryville Municipal Code?
Yes.
The law allows us to allow her to just read that paragraph.
I understand. So we are not approving the ordinance or disapproving, we are just, it's all about whether you should read this or that?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters?
Aye. Madam City Attorney, would you like to read by title only?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, adding Chapter 15 to Title IV of the Emeryville Municipal Code entitled Private Parking Facilities. Sequent determination is exempt pursuant to Guideline Section 15061B3, 15378A, and 15378B5.
Thank you. The title of the ordinance having been read and in the record, as a public hearing, is there any member wishing to make a motion on the ordinance itself?
I'm of approval of the ordinance.
Hey, I have a motion to approve the ordinance. Is there a second to approve the ordinance? Hey, I have a motion to approve the ordinance. Is there a second to approve the ordinance? Motion fails for lack of a second. The item is dead. We will move to item 11.2, which is the second public hearing of the evening, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, granting a waiver from the noise ordinance for paving work on Shellmount Streets, 65th, 66th, 67th, and Hollis Streets, for a consecutive 14-day period on dates to be determined between June 21st and November 19th, 2023. Okay, for work with the Union Pacific Railroad. Members, by request for unanimous consent, I'm asking that we waive presentation. We've received this presentation, it's just the dates being set. Is there any objection to my request to waive unanimous consent?
No. None.
No, it's hearing none. Presentation is hereby waived. This is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, time is 8:35 PM. I call to order the public hearing. A member of the public wishing to comment on the request for a noise ordinance waiver, will get two minutes to do so. Is there any member of the public? Any member of the public wishing to comment?
Sorry, I think I need to recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Member Mora. I didn't get that note from anybody on staff, so I did not know you were recused. All right, would you like to announce yourself as being recused and statewide? Go ahead.
Sorry, do I just drop off the call?
No, you need to state for the record the address of your property and state that you live within proximity to it, please.
Yes, I do. So I live at 6466 Hollis, so I'm close to the area where we're discussing. So I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, and Member Mora will be, he's already in the waiting room, so he's in the attendees. So he's okay, Madam?
He's in the attendees.
Yeah, he's in the attendees, so he's fine. All right. So, Madam Clerk, the system went down for me, so do we have public comment speakers?
Yes, Mayor, we have Bryant Donahue.
Okay, recognize Bryant Donahue for two minutes, please.
Okay, I just wanted to fasten the staff, because the last issue, the parking at the Bay Street. What was extremely evident, or extremely screaming, what they didn't tell us, how much money it was going to cost us if we had implemented that ordinance. Now, they're going to come back again and try to sweeten the deal or whatever somehow, but why wouldn't the staff have told us the budgetary, you know, how much money this is going to cost us if we become the police for this corporation? Basically, that, it was, the City of Emeryville were going to become mall cops for Bay Street Mall. The staff didn't tell us how much money it would cost us. So shame on the staff. Why not? Why wouldn't they tell us how much money? So, you know, I implore the staff, just do a better job. Let the decision-makers know about the budget, you know, and this kind of thing. And I can't see no reason other than, you know, they like the Bay Street Mall, and they wanted to do this favor for them. So shame on the staff.
Are there any other members of the public here to speak on this item? No? Okay, the public hearing is closed at 8:37 PM. I'll bring it back for discussion. Members, is there any discussion on this item? Member Pryforce?
My apologies. My apologies, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, and, and City Attorney. I have to recuse myself as well.
No, you don't, you don't own property.
Oh.
You're a renter, right?
Got it. Yes.
Yeah, this is only if you own property within 1,000 feet of the site.
Okay, got it. Got it. Thank you.
All right, so, and I see the, I see Member Mora's hand raised, but we're not addressing him, because he's recused. So is there any further discussion or debate? I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to grant the noise waiver for this item.
I second.
Thank you. Motion by Bouders, second by Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora is recused. Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders.
Aye. The motion passes. The resolution is approved. Councilmember Mora is back in the meeting. There are no action items this evening, members. Department head reports, are there any department head reports late-breaking? There are not. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, no department head reports. Future agenda item requests, are there members of council who have a future agenda item request? Member Pryforce?
So I would like to place on a future, future agenda item, the creation of, and especially given the recent events with our former president, and, and, yeah, so I would, ethics is really important, and I have mentioned it previously, and I believe that an independent ethics committee or commission should be created by our body. And from my understanding, several times that it was, so I'm not going to discuss any further, but in the spirit of what we are owed to when it comes to our positions in government, I will, I will commence with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there three votes to agenda the requested item? Okay, seeing none. Are there other members who have a future agenda item request? I have, I have a request this evening. My request is to ask staff to come back, well, so let me preface my request with why I'm making my request. This is National Pollinator Week, and the movement towards climate catastrophe, I think, is a serious one, and there are efforts that can be made locally to do things that improve and protect pollinators, as well as the food web for which we are members of. And I would like to propose a series of small ordinances that would improve Emeryville's standing as a community that supports pollinators and protects the food web against harmful toxics. I would like to ask for a study session to have staff come back to prepare potential ordinances for the following items. An ordinance to ban neonicotinoids, which is a known pesticide, of which there are several categories that are extremely harmful and kill honeybees and other pollinators, including waterborne insects that feed fish and birds. To ban rodenticides, which, when consumed by rodents, and then rodents are consumed by birds of prey, especially osprey, owl, and hawks, which are native to this area, poison and kill the owlets and other small birds that are part of our food web here. I would like to third request that we amend the Emeryville Municipal Code's nuisance ordinance related to lawn maintenance, to expressly allow for the placement and growth of wildflowers in lieu of a lawn in Emeryville homes, so that we can create spaces for bees and butterflies. And fourthly, the consideration of a voluntary wildflowering program that would promote and improve butterfly and bee habitat, as well as fruit trees in the City of Emeryville, by creating a space where Emeryville residents with property could agree to maintain trees and/or plant with the city's assistance wildflowers in a manner conducive to protecting biodiversity. That is my request. Are there three votes to support a study session to agenda those items?
I vote yes.
Member Pryforce is absent or quiet. Member Mora?
Yes, I support that.
Okay, there are four votes yes, so that will be.
Can I add to that agenda item?
Can request.
Yes, on that banning of the rodenticides, there are many rodents where I live, and the only way they can get rid of those rats is with the rodenticide or traps. So I would like to have the study session include the number of people or the number of HOAs that use rodenticides.
Well, the study session, I will offer to work with staff to ensure all that information is available, what options and alternatives exist, and what is the current practices of the city and businesses as part of it. We'll bring it in the fall.
Fantastic.
Okay, so that will be, that has got a majority support, four ayes, so we'll agenda that for sometime in the fall, when staff have the information for a study session. Okay? All right. Are there any other additional future agenda item requests? Okay, seeing and hearing none. That takes us to adjournment. The time is 8:44. This meeting is adjourned. Wish all of you a very happy, healthy, and successful last week of Pride.